February 1st, 2024, meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. McWilliams?
Here.
Ms. Avery?
Present.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Dr. Silverman?
Here.
Dr. Campbell?
Present.
Mr. Payne?
Present.
Ms. DeGrasse?
Here.
Next, I would like to move to item 1.3, the approval of the agenda.
So move. Second.
I want to make a motion to move item 8.1 to 1.5.
Okay. Any other motions?
Yes, and I'd like to make a motion that we remove item 5.6 from the agenda.
We have a second on the motion.
Second.
All right, so we have a cross motion. McWilliams and Ms. Avery want to move 8.1 to item 1.5 and also to remove item 5.6. A second made by Mr. Payne. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Avery?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Dr. Silverman?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeGrasse?
Yes. At this time, we'll stand for the moment of silence and Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Avery.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to item 1.5, and we'll hear from Dr. Harrison at this time.
Good evening, Chair Graves and members of the board, and thank you all so much to our mayor and our city council members for being here. And I'm joined, I'd like to join at the podium Dr. Jerry Wallace and Dr. Johnson in a moment. In November 2020, the Danville voters approved a plan to develop a resort casino in the former Danville Mills Industrial Complex located in the Schoolfield property. Caesar's Entertainment, the casino developer and operator projected a number of dollars that would come to the city over a six-year period. I'm really proud to say that I live in a city where our city manager, our mayor and city council didn't just say, well, we're going to collect these dollars, but they said we're going to collect these dollars to get the feedback from community members about the use of some of these dollars. And that plan would be called Investing in Danville. And so that's why we have asked you all here this evening, because that is not how every community handles investments and dollars that come above what's expected. So this was a very transparent process that began in 2020, and a plan was published in 2023 not too long ago. And that plan has a lot of promises and commitments, and we know that all of it certainly, certainly way exceeds any amount of money we would collect, but we certainly honor the fact that it acknowledges the investment in education and the desire to invest in our youth. And we wanted to come this evening and support that commitment through a resolution if we would be okay reading that. And so I'll read in part, not all, but in part. Whereas the students of Danville Public Schools deserve the best educational opportunity possible, and whereas in 2020, the voters approved the development of a resort casino in the former Danville Mills Industrial Complex located in Schoolfield, and whereas our city council has maintained that education is a top priority for a city, and of course adequate funding is always, always, always appreciated when it comes to supporting our school district. The Danville Public Schools has adopted a budget, budget recommendations from the Danville Public Schools multi-year financial planning study completed by the National Resource Network for FY '25 budget in supporting the efforts of the city to align with community goals. And whereas from 2024 to 2030, it is projected that the casino will have recurring revenue that is stated in the Investing in Danville Plan, and whereas the city of Danville is citizens and the Citizen Advisory Committee established to review appropriate use of revenues generated by the casino first in 2020 and again in 2023, and whereas the citizens and the Citizen Advisory Committee members have asserted that education is a top priority in our community in consideration for the expense of some of the revenues, now therefore be it resolved that in consideration of the foregone, in light of the best interests of Danville Public Schools, its students, parents, teachers, and the community at large, the Danville School Board fully supports the projects identified and published in the Investing in Danville driven plan for the best use of these revenues. Be it that further resolved that we as a city of Danville School Board support funds listed, and these funds go to support the additional education of students after high school at the Danville Community College for these graduates. We are advocating supporting our teacher program. We're advocating that we support our preschool program because we know when we invest in our youth, we are really going to benefit it from years to come. Instructional support initiatives, K-3 literacy, and security. And so this resolution really speaks to the fact that we live in a community whereby our city manager, our mayor, our city council, all above, decided that it was worth bringing a group together to see how we could best invest in education. And so this resolution supports the Investing in Danville Plan, and it says upon a vote that we all appreciate the opportunity to be considered, especially our youth. And I hope that our community takes time to read our plan because it really demonstrates an investment in our youth. So we thank you so much. So at this time, and I have Dr. Wallace with us because he did present a letter as well for your review, which I'll present to Mayor Jones. And this letter, fill out the blank the letter.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you guys. I'm joined by Dr. Johnson, please go on up so I don't steal all the thunder. But I want to start off by saying thank you for the opportunity to the city as well as the board. You guys are doing amazing work. I've had the pleasure of reading to your elementary students with our book Ace the Mighty. So this is another partnership with DPS that we really want to encourage you guys. So I wanted to bring some numbers. Part of the proposal has a promise portion of it. And when people hear promise, they just think everything is free, but the Promise Program is actually the last dollar in. So it encourages students to fill out their FASFA, to use all the other resources before they touch this pool. So Henry County Public Schools has been doing this since 2018. I got these numbers from President Greg Hodges at Patrick and Henry. So those students from Henry County Public Schools have a promise. It's the seed program, and they're allowed to go to Patrick and Henry tuition-free. So in four, in six years, they've only spent $4 million. And they did that because it's the last dollar in. So out of the six cohorts, they've helped 1,300 students, and that's 225 students per class. And after all of that, they've helped with tuition, books, fees, and they actually have four or five success coaches in that $4 million, and they've only spent $4 million. So if you think about that, the investment in the upward mobility that some of these students that I walk past on the way in here could do and how they could benefit from that. Is there anything else you would like to add?
I'll just, obviously, say that affordability, as many of you all know, it still is the number one barrier when it comes to accessing higher education, right? So this is, don't underestimate the enormous resource and the impact that it's going to have in this community. And kudos to Dr. Harrison.
So we'll call for a vote.
And again, thank you, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Wallace, and members of the city council, Mayor Jones. This is an action item.
Ms. Chair, move.
Second.
Motion made by Dr. Campbell, second by Ms. Avery. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Avery?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Dr. Silverman?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. DeGrasse?
Yes.
So before you all come up and sign, Mayor Jones, would you like to take a few remarks? Would you like to take a few remarks?
I want to say first of all, good evening to the board, to all of you here. I'm asking council members to join me because we have young people here, and I want them to know who their elected body is. Right here is Councilman Campbell, and most of our young people are there. So if you all could just wave at the young people. Our Vice Mayor, Dr. Gary Miller, and Councilman Sherman Saunders. Let me just first of all say thank you to the board. Dr. Harrison, it is absolutely amazing for us to be here tonight, and we did not know my boss, Dr. Jerry Wallace, was going to be here, him and Dr. Johnson. So I just want you all to know on behalf of city council that we are really excited, and I'll be very brief. There's so much I want to say because Danville Public Schools and this board and our persons, all of the employees of Danville Public Schools, we don't get the opportunity as a council to do this because we don't want to step on the school board's feet or foot. So if all of the employees of Danville Public Schools can please stand up. Chairman Graves, we want to say thank you to each and every one of you. City council, and please stay standing. Please stay standing. Education is our number one priority. I wish DCC employees were here as well. Education is our number one employee, number one goal, and we're serious about it, and we know what you go through. Dr. Harrison has did an amazing job, and her budget team, we're looking for, yes, give her a hand. Her and her leadership team, you all, we want to say thank you all so much. We had some challenging times, and we want to encourage you by simply saying this, stay the course. Stay the course. We have your front, we have your side. Young people, oftentimes you hear people say, we got your back. Sometimes you need folk to get in front. And so we with you. And on behalf of city council, we want to say our city manager, our city staff, thank you all so, so much. We don't get the opportunity to do this, but we sincerely appreciate everything that you do, and we're looking forward to working more with you all. Thank you so much. And Dr. Wallace, Dr. Johnson, and everything that's happening with our DCC, with the dual enrollment programs, and everything that you're doing and partnering with Danville Public Schools, thank you all, and thank the leadership team. Thank us for everything we're doing. Thank you all so much. Thank you, thank you.
Four hundred and thirty-eight youth from the state of Virginia attended. I took myself from Danville. I wish to have been able to take someone, but I do plan to do so in the upcoming. Because that is a day for youth who are a part of four age to be excused from school. So, I hope that I can gain you all's interest in giving back to the community because there's a wealth of knowledge within this room, within this building, that we can help our youth reach their full potential.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. I appreciate that. We'll definitely be in touch. Thank you. Appreciate you. Next, we'll move to item five point one, Virginia School Board Appreciation Month, February twenty twenty-four. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hairston.
All right, this is our School Board Appreciation Month, and oftentimes, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that the public and, and I'm not sure all employees know how much you all invest in helping our school district be successful. You attend conferences, and that's after working your forty and fifty-hour job. You attend events, we have basketball games, band events, parent conferences, you name it, you all are there to support. You visit schools, and I cannot tell you how many of you float through a school, and we're always appreciative for that advance notice. But at the same time, we know that you all are really, and I want everyone to know, that our school board, they do remarkable work, and they, they have other things. They have jobs and lives, but they still take time for our school district. And so, I think you prepared some other little specialties, right?
Yes.
We'll read the resolution first. Whereas the education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our state is built, and whereas locally-elected and appointed school board play an important and vital role in a constitutional republic, and decisions made by local boards of education directly influence instruction in Virginia's public schools, and whereas the decisions affect the present and future lives of children, and also set direction to prepare all students to be competitive in a local, state, national, and global twenty-first-century knowledge economy, and whereas local school board members work with parents, businesses, education professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas this year's theme, "The Heart of Education," our school board reflects the leadership of local school board members as they service their local divisions and advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. And whereas School Board Appreciation Month provides an opportunity to celebrate Virginia's school board members who champion the mission of public education, now therefore be it resolved that the Danville School Board recognizes the contributions of the state's local school boards to the academic success of its public school students, and expresses the sincerest recognition to the local board members for the focus on the well-being and achievement of children throughout the state. And finally, be it resolved that the Danville School Board declares February twenty twenty-four as School Board Appreciation Month, and encourages local school divisions and community leaders to appropriately recognize our state's dedicated school boards. And this was adopted January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. And you have some other, would you like to share?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Rhonda Wright Simmons, and I won't say I'm the proud principal because Ms. Simmons takes that. I'm Rhonda Wright Simmons, and I'm the happy principal of Northside and Grove Park Preschool, and we are here today to celebrate you. If you're a Northside or Grove Park kid or adult, come on up. Aww. And I have brought with me some very special people. Let me start off by introducing Ms. Jamisha Petty-Cruz. She is our instructional coach at both Grove Park and Northside Preschool. I also have Ms. Zee Clark, who is a teacher at Northside Preschool and happens to be our Teacher of the Year this year. We also have Ms. Dana Smith, and she is one of our preschool teachers at Grove Park Preschool. And these are some of our wonderful children. This is Aiden. Say hi, Aiden. This is Leon. This is Kaya. Say hi, say hi. This is Addison. This is Imani. And this is Cannon. Say hi. So, if you'll look around, these children, as well as the other children at Grove Park and Northside Preschool, have made you some things that we hope you will know that we appreciate you. The big banner says back there, "Though we are small, we appreciate you all," Grove Park and Northside Preschool. Also, the children are going to deliver some things to you as well, so I want to say we made some hearts, since this is the, you are the heart of education. Now, I will say, our little ones may not know what you do. They know what the teachers do. Sometimes they know what I do. I don't think they know what you do, but...
Well, actually, I was in Coog line, and one of your little ones, because I was playing kitchen together, right? And she said, "That's the lady that owns the school." Really, they all know what I do. But they have my deal.
Yes. But, we that work in the school know what you do, and we want to say thank you for never forgetting the tiniest learners in Danville Public Schools. So, Mr. Payne? Uh, right there? Right there? Okay. Cannon, we go deliver to Payne, so I think you're blessed. Do you want to go to Payne? Okay. Okay, if we could just have one more second of your time, we could not let this pass with it also being School Board Clerk Appreciation Week.
Aww.
Markeeta Bash Jones, we claim her because she started with us at Northside and Grove Park Preschool, and we love her so much more than you guys ever could.
Oh, that's so nice. Oh, that's so nice.
Thank you again. Next, we'll move to item five point two, twenty twenty-four Regional Art Contest Judges. And at this time, we'll have Dr. Stone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Each year, our regional, our school boards within our region have art competitions, and, and we're asked to select, Mr. Payne is our vice president of our regional organization, and we're asked to select representatives to help be judges. And I can tell you, we know that teachers work really, really long hours, and they go above and beyond the call of duty. Whenever we call them, they're ready to come and help us. And so, we had two teachers help us with this, this competition this time, and Mr. Payne especially wanted to, on behalf of the board, recognize these two teachers who spent their time working with this competition. So, I'd first like to ask Isabel Griffin to come forward. Isabel was, I thought we were going to send out a positive five, because she's so busy. And if you ever want to see some of her amazing work, just drop by Bonner, she is just, she just does an amazing job. She's always has the children engaged, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll get a picture with you.
Yes.
And then Lawrence McWilliams is new to us, and he's at the alternative school, and I can tell you that the children are just so engaged. He has artwork everywhere, and we got him out of the basement into a classroom, so that was a good thing. But he just jumped right in, and so he'd been a part of our family for years and years. He loves our children, he coaches them, gives them life skills, and, and really engages and capitalizes on the creativity. So, Mr. McWilliams, thank you as well. Y'all will remember, y'all will remember the babies from the parade, the Christmas parade. So, I'm telling you, they just jumped right in, everything we need to do. So, we'd like a picture with you all in the, in the...
Next, we'll move to item five point three, Black History Month, February twenty twenty-four. And at this time, we'll hear from Ms. Agner, the proclamation read by Ms. Abert.
Proclamation, Black History Month, February two thousand twenty-four. Whereas in nineteen seventy-six, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout, throughout our American experience. And whereas the history of people of African heritage goes back thousands of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced, and innovative societies in the history of human existence. And whereas African-Americans have played a significant role in the history of the United States, from the early days of the pioneers to our present-day leaders in such industries as aerospace, finance, government, and international trade. And whereas, Black History Month is a time for all Americans to reflect on the rich history and teachings of African-Americans whose contributions are vast and wide. And whereas, during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the rich history and teachings of African-Americans and bear witness to the progress, beauty, and achievements they have made throughout our region. Now, therefore, the Danville School Board does hereby proclaim the month of February two thousand twenty-four to be Black History Month in the Danville Public Schools. We encourage the celebration of the collective ingenuity, creativity, cultures, and traditions of African-Americans, and encourage participation in education events, education events honoring the contribution of Black Americans. Signed this eighteenth day of January two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Taquan Graves, Chair, Dr. Angela S. Hairston, EDD Superintendent.
Good evening, Chair Graves, Vice Chair Payne, members of the board, and Dr. Hairston. I am honored and humbled to stand before you today as we mark the beginning of Black History Month. This month serves as a powerful reminder of the extraordinary contributions that African-Americans have made to the fabric of our nation and the world. As we come together to celebrate the richness of black culture, resilience, and achievements, I am grateful for the opportunity to accept this proclamation recognizing the significance of Black History Month. Our nation's history is complex, marked by both triumphs and struggles. Black History Month is a chance for all of us to learn from the past, acknowledge the systemic injustices that have been faced, and work together to build a more inclusive and equitable future. It is a time to honor the leaders, visionaries, and everyday heroes who have played pivotal roles in shaping our society. I encourage each and every one of us to engage in meaningful conversations, educate ourselves on the history and experiences of the black community, and strive for empathy and unity. By doing so, we can foster a society where diversity is celebrated and the contributions of all individuals are valued. And I've put together a little slides, you know, that's what we do. And we have pictures of things we've done in the past, we have some suggestions of activities, we have many things planned in our division such as Black History Moments each morning, we have Name That Tune, we have a poetry slam, we have programs at several of our schools, and daily trivia contests. And tonight, I have with me Ms. Mildred Richardson and Ms. Judy Brown from Woodbury Hills Elementary School, and Mrs. Ramona Warren and Ms. Felicia Edmonds from Johnson Elementary School to share with you upcoming events at their schools.
Thank you for having us tonight. So, I am new, as you know, to Danville Public Schools, and I hear that I am in for quite a treat with the program that is going to be on February thirteenth. And it is due to the leadership and the vision of Ms. Edmonds is why that takes place. I have no doubt because she is a moving force behind it, so I'll let her share.
I just thank you, I'd just like to say thank you to the school board for your past support, and for your continued support for allowing our students at GLH Johnson to shine through their talents. Yes, you're in for a treat, we like to think so. We'd like for the children to learn different dances, different songs, but we also like for them to perform on the songs and rumors that they know currently. So, we just invite you all out to come out, then we're thirteenth, five o'clock at GW, and yes, you'll be in for a treat, I hope, anyway, yes.
Good evening, thank you for having us. We're excited this year at Woodbury, we'll have our program February the twenty-seventh, five o'clock at Bonner Middle School. We're so excited, and of course, the brains behind it is Ms. Judy Brown, so we'll let her come up and share a little information.
Hello, 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 greetings from Woodbury. Yes, we're excited about our Black History program. It is entitled, "Wake Up, Stand Up, and Dream," with a focus on attendance, which is very exciting as well. Out of our three hundred-plus students, one hundred fifty have turned in permission slips. That's exciting, but the most exciting part for me is, the audience cannot tell who has fours or ones on their report card, the audience cannot tell who's behaviorally challenged, the audience cannot tell who has an IEP. Everybody is the same on that stage, and everybody's having fun. Quick little synopsis, oh, we will have kindergartners modeling African attire in a classroom scene with an attendance piece, they will also be singing the Black National Anthem. We have a kindergarten teacher from South Africa who is teaching the first graders an authentic African dance. We have second graders honoring Black historians. We have a teacher from Jamaica who will be singing, and her students will be dancing, and reciting poetry. We have a unique original skit based upon Harriet Tubman, and a duet, teacher duet. And we also have another unique original skit, teacher-created, based upon attendance. Oh, what a great way to get the message out to parents, right? We're excited, and we hope you will be there for our own little Broadway production.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to item five point four, Career and Technical Education Month, February twenty twenty-four. Now, Dr. Stone can come forward, and we'll have the proclamation read by Mr. McWilliams.
Chairman Graves, board members, and Dr. Hairston, we are immensely honored to accept the CTE proclamation for all the dedicated individuals who have tirelessly worked to advance career in technical education. Together, we have contributed towards transforming lives, empowering our community, and building a better future for all. And I know y'all got to read that proclamation, so I'm going to stop there and let you see.
I was going to let you. Mr. McWilliams.
Well, it's not you all, it's me. Whereas, February first through twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas, career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. Whereas, students in career and technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement. And whereas, career and technical education provides students with career exploration opportunities early in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about the academic coursework and pursue programs of study and career pathways. And whereas, leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to addressing the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, cybersecurity, and information technology. And whereas, career and technical education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials. And whereas, career and technical education programs ensure that employers have access to qualified and thriving workforce, to a qualified and thriving workforce, ensuring America is a strong and competitive economy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Danville School Board recognizes February twenty twenty-four as Career and Technical Education Month, signed this eighteenth day of January two thousand twenty-four. Taquan Graves, Chair, Angela S. Hairston, EDD Superintendent.
On behalf of the CTE department and team, we're grateful for the importance of celebrating CTE and its profound impact on our society. CTE is not merely educational pathways, but pathway to success, opportunity, and fulfilling one's true potential. CTE goes beyond traditional academic education, it provides practical, hands-on experiences that bridge the gap between the classroom and the workplace. Okay, thank you for all your unravering support and believing in the power of CTE. Together, we will shape a brighter future for generations to come. And as we kick off February month for CTE, I would like for us to reflect on some of the things that we have done, like developing the academic structures and course pathways, identifying the challenging work towards moving CTE forward through increasing certification, increasing our completers and finishers within our programs, and highlighting the achievements with Career Days and our upcoming CTE Career Expo. We plan to meet, implement Expos in April, we have increased our work-based learning opportunity for all of our second-year programs, and looking to extend apprenticeship programs within our schools, all while adopting twenty-first-century courses such as an aviation program that's forthcoming, that we're working on now, hospitality and tourism, and state and regional programs such as culinary arts and teachers for tomorrow as stellar programs within our region. Here's some pictures to highlight, and together we'll shape the brighter future generations to come. And on behalf of the CTE team, I have with me Dr. Barnes, Ms. Donna Smith, who is our dental careers teacher, and Ms. Kimberly Kidd, who is our family and consumer science teacher, and we humbly accept this proclamation. Thank you for it.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to item five point five, National School Counseling Week, February fifth through ninth, twenty twenty-four. And at this time, we'll hear from Ms. Deborah Harris, the proclamation read by Ms. Walker.
Whereas, school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas, school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas, whereas, school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas, school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs, and help students become more productive members of society. And whereas, comprehensive developmental school counseling... And whereas, comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of educational process that enables all students to achieve success in the schools. Therefore, Danville Public Schools hereby proclaims February 5th through the 9th, 2024, as National School Counseling Week. Signed this 18th day of January 2024, Mr. Taekwon Graves Chair, Dr. Angela Hairston Superintendent.
Chair Graves, Vice Chair Payne, and School Board Members, Superintendent Harrison, what an honor to stand before you as we recognize our school counselors. I would like at this time, if you can just indulge me where they, um, I want them to introduce themselves, say their name and the school in which, um, they were.
Greetings. My name is Bobby Bennett, and I am the School Counselor at Park Avenue Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Beth DeAristiThauval, and I'm the School Counselor at Activate STEM Academy.
Good evening. I'm Ashley A. Casey. I am the School Counselor at Woodbury Hills Elementary School.
Good evening. I'm Felicia Ferguson. I'm the School Counselor at Gibson Elementary School.
And also, I have with me, uh, Ms. Cheryl Lyman, and she is the Coordinator for our Captain Department, and she works with us in this, um, Student Support Services. And, um, the American School Counselors Association has designated February the 5th through the 9th as National School Counseling Week. And our theme for this year is School Counseling Standards-Based, Students-Focused. So our counselors are very important. Counselors matter. We have a counselor at each school. Some schools have multiple counselors. And our three big buckets that we look at with our counselors are our academic success, our college and career readiness, and our social-emotional development. Just our academic, um, success, we encourage, they encourage the rigor. They focus on development and attitudes. They foster motivation, engage personalized learning on the college and career. They assist students in creating post-secondary plans. They encourage students to participate in career and technical education activities for our social-emotional development. They promote the acquisition of appropriate self-regulation skills. They also assist students to understand and capitalize on personal strengths. And those are just a few things that they also do. And I'm gonna have Ms. write for it.
So she's giving you the three big buckets of what our counselors provide service for for our students. Um, but when you look at the academic success, college and career readiness, and social-emotional development, that has to be delivered. And there's various ways for which they do so. They deliver in instruction, and oftentimes, they're on a rotational plan, particularly at our elementary level, going in and out of our classrooms, providing guidance, um, under SEL, um, small group supports. They respond to crisis at their schools, um, collaborate and have a referral process in place. And that collaboration goes across their grade span or across the content, depending upon whether they're elementary or our middle school or our high school, um, counselors. Plan and console. Oftentimes, when we think of those two, we're thinking about how, particularly at our high school level, and they're helping our students get ready for our secondary, um, beyond, um, high school, um, education. And then they move into individual and small group, um, console. Um, see a problem, help fix a problem, so to speak. Um, I am totally, um, I hope they know this, but I am totally proud of them. Um, they have been, um, very supportive and very helpful. Um, I'm learning a lot from them, and, um, the services for which they provide for our students is, is beyond measure.
And from now, we might hear a little bit from Ms. Casey. This is her first year. Ms. Casey?
Good evening, Chairman Graves, Vice Chairman Payne, Superintendent Harrison, all of the great members on the School Board, and to everyone that is here tonight. I am humbled to be asked to be speak on behalf of all of the great school counselors that are here and those who are not even in attendance tonight. My name is Ashley A. Casey, and I am the School Counselor at Woodbury Hills Elementary School. This is my first year of service at Danville Public Schools, and what a great journey this has been so far. Now, some may ask, is it really that great? Instead of highlighting the challenges that school counselors may face, I want to focus, I want to center the focus on the beauty of being a school counselor, which is to make a difference in the students' lives. The Marion Webster Dictionary states that a school counselor is a person who gives help and advice to students about educational and personal decisions. While this is true, my experience has been so much more. As a school counselor, we build relationships and rapport with the students, which are built on trust. We make sure that we are compassionate and patient with the students when assisting them in navigating through their challenges. In addition, we collaborate with the teachers, administration, parents, and community to make sure that there are all resources to aid in their goals and obstacles. Is this an easy task? Not at all. But to see how we play a role in re-establishing hope and nurturing resilience makes the love for this job grow every day. I'm honored to be a part of this wonderful group of school counselors and Danville Public Schools, and standing in unity with all of our positions, we will continue to advocate for the students. Go Both Pack!
So thank you again. You see, we have just an awesome group of counselors. And thank you, Ms. Richardson, for coming to support, um, Ms. Casey. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Ms., um, Ms. Marsha, Ms. Casey's, um, mom. She came out and gave her support. Thank you, Mom. We like moms no matter what our age. And so again, thank you. Uh, we appreciate it.
Next, we'll move to item 6.1, Career Expo in Growing TSOs. At this time, we'll hear from Dr. Stone.
Good evening again. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you today about career and technical student organizations, um, affectionately known as CTSOs. One of the key components of CTE is involvement in CTSOs. These organizations allow students to enhance their abilities, develop leadership skills, and connect with industry professionals. CTSOs offer a plethora of opportunities for competitions and conferences, of networking events, and community service projects. Through participation in CTSOs, students gain valuable skills in teamwork, problem-solving, public speaking, um, analyzing and solving problems, communication, and communicating confidently with others. In Virginia, CTSOs, um, extend curriculum into leadership and service opportunities. This year, our CTOs have been involved in several activities, and they are as follows. Um, FBLA in October attended a fall conference where thirty students participated in resume and cover letter workshops. Educators Rising, um, ten students participated in the DCC Expo. And in March in 2024, we are sending ten students to participate in Duffries, uh, Virginia, competing in lesson planning and other competitions with other teacher cadets. Skills USA, five students participated in the Ush, industry, law enforcement, security, and public safety panel discussion. And students will also participate in the upcoming Spring Regional Skills USA Competition. HOSA, twenty-two students participated in Impact Health at Virginia State, um, Fair in September. Nine students participated in a crop walk, as a service project. Thirty students participated in Cancer Association fundraising and contributed $150. December, HOSA Cares Initiative delivered Christmas cares packages to Roman Eagle residents. And monthly, HOSA hosts monthly meetings to all nurse aide and dental aide students. TSA, twelve students participated in a hen house competition, which is our technology and industry, um, courses. Twelve students are divided into two teams to monthly, um, monthly projects competition. And twelve students will participate in our Spring USA, Skills USA Competition. For FCCLA, students participate in monthly meetings and have and will participate in local and regional competitions and in our Career Expo. We don't, this, Virginia doesn't recognize middle school, um, organizations. However, we did implement a coding club at our Bonner Middle School, and they meet monthly as well as Girls Coding and Boys Coding Club. So, uh, our data represents, in 2023, we had one of six of those active, um, clubs being involved in activities and competitions and conferences. To date, we have a hundred percent. All six of our identified CTSOs are actively engaged, and we applaud them. At this time, Dr. Barnes and I would like to invite the following students who have appeared at the podium to join us to be recognized. Uh, we do have, um, officers as well as regular members here today with us. We have Charisma Watson, who is the HOSA President. We also have Akira Myers, who also participates in summer internship, uh, as a HOSA treasurer. We will, um, give you a medal. So once you hear your name, just step over here, and we'll hand you a medal. Dr. Harrison, enjoy that thing here. So we're honoring all of our CTSOs that are represented. We also will give them medals at the end if they were not able to make it tonight. Sol Mendoza, who's also representing criminal justice in NJROTC. Jamia Cruz is here for FCCLA. Jazara Logan is here on behalf of FBLA. We have, uh, Gyro Gunter, who's here for Teachers for Tomorrow. Bria Asia Richardson, who's here as a teacher cadet, representing Teachers for Tomorrow. We have Benson Farmer, who's here representing dental careers. Nyla Stewart, dental careers. And Taekwon Brock, dental careers. Thank you all for your dedication to our CTSOs. We greatly appreciate it. We're honored that you all are doing such remarkable work and supporting our conferences and competitions in the region locally and across the state. Thank you. Yes, and we're excited, we're excited that we're all participating, and you'll see some of them as well. We, uh, are hosting April the 11th, as a matter of fact, a Career Expo, where students in our district will gather together to showcase their skills in some of the, um, complex things that they're learning inside of their courses. We will send out personal invitations. We're hoping the governor will shoot us a shoot, um, a, a, a little demo to say, applauding the South Side region for conducting this type of huge event. The students will showcase their skills to the public, to the community. So we're inviting business partnerships to come to the institute where we will host this event to see the students in all of our classes showcase their skills. So it's gonna be a grand event. We're gonna also set up a Let's Talk section so that if anyone is interested in employing these students, because not all kids go to college, some kids that go to college also have to work, that they can talk to, uh, future employees. They'll have their resumes and cover letters there. So we're hoping this be a grand event. We will send out invitations, um, to each and every one of you all, and we'll hope to do some blasphem blogs out there and, um, social media as well as in the news to get this promoted. So we're excited about that. Thank you.
Next, we'll move to item 7.1, Personnel Recommendations. At this time, we'll hear from Dr. Holler.
Good evening. You've been presented with a personnel recommendation for review, consideration, and approval, and I can address any questions you may have tonight.
Any questions? Here or none? This is an action item? Motion made by Dr. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Payne. Any discussion? Here or none? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Silverman?
Yes.
Ms. Abrams?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Harrison.
Yeah, since my, uh, honor, we had, um, uh, a principal appointment, and, and the, uh, and she, I think she was sick at the time. So, uh, please stand, Ms. Warren. Ms. Warren comes to us, um, she has a Bachelor's of Arts degree from Lee McCray College. Uh, she has a certificate in learning disabilities, a master's from Appalachian State University, and a master's, a second master's from the University of North Carolina. Uh, she has served for over twenty years as an elementary educator, teaching in the elementary as well as the middle school level. Uh, she has certifications in administration, cross-categorical K-12 education, learning disabilities, and social studies. And I'm honored that, um, she hit the ground running. I think, um, you moved, I think you moved here, uh, on a Friday, and you probably were unpacking Saturday and Sunday and here on Monday and work. So we appreciate you being a neighbor and our, and our principal for Johnson Elementary. So I wanted to introduce everyone to our new principal, Ms. Warren. She's not really new anymore, but she didn't get to come and meet the board. So I wanted to introduce everyone to our principal, Ramona Warren. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Ms. Warren. Next, we'll move to item 9.1, Complete HVAC System Installation at Glenwood. And at this time, we'll hear from Mr. McBay.
Good afternoon, Chair Graves, Vice Chair Payne, Dr. Harrison, and members of the board. I bring before you RFP 2324-518, which is a new HVAC system installed at the Glenwood campus. Um, the RFP was posted on January the 10th, '24. Um, and it came down, it opening day was, um, January 22nd. and it came down, bid opening day was January 22nd of '24, with only one bid coming in from Training Incorporated. The RFP came in for the HVAC system for $3,244,909 with an add of an electrical, which is running electrical to all the HVAC systems, for $598,592, for the sum of $3,843,501 for the total complete system.
I was saying, can you approve for that?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Just a quick one. Do we know the CER rating of the system?
Sir?
The CER rating of the HVAC?
It's in here, and I will be happy to email it to you.
I just, yes, thanks.
I have all of the information here.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions? This is an action item?
Chair, will we approve, second?
Motion made by Dr. Campbell, second by Mr. McWilliams. Any discussion? Here and now. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Silverman?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McBay.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to item 9.2, RFP 2324-515, Construction Management Services for Forest Hills Elementary School. At this time, we'll hear from Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, board members. I'm here tonight to request permission to award RFP 2324-515, Construction Management Services for Forest Hills School. We had five proposals, and we formed a committee. We met on the committee to choose which three of the firms we wanted to interview. And out of those three firms, we chose MVP, who currently is doing our construction management services for the other three projects. And the final outcome of their, our negotiations is a price of $938,480. And they're ready to start working with the architect in the design of the renovations in addition to Forest Hills. Any questions?
Any questions?
I'm just curious, because it seems like we spent so much on so many of the others. I know $900,000 is a lot of money, but it doesn't seem like it's that much compared to what we've spent everywhere else.
And actually, his price is comparable to what he's charging us on the other three projects, each project. And the reason we wanted to, we went with him mainly, them mainly, because they know how we operate, and we know how they, what they expect from us. So out of the other two that we interviewed, this firm actually has our interests in mind. The other one's a little questionable.
Are they the equivalent of a general contractor? Is that?
The other two, the other four that gave proposals, they do general contracting also with construction management, and that's why we wanted to go with MVP. All they do is management services.
You might be thinking about the architect, Mr. McWilliams. The price is a little higher. Construction management works on behalf of the board, and we had five just incredible proposals. So what we do is we have a scoring sheet, and we go through all of the expectations and qualifications and rate each one of the, rate each one after we select the three. And they work on behalf of you, the board. They ensure that we adhere to the architect's expectations for design. They watch the budget, and they guide our decision-making relative to change orders. So these are experts that come with accountants. They come with civil engineers. Their firm is actually representing the school board and the school district's interests. So they are at the table. The general, the general contractor is working with the architect, but they're there to watch every single day. And they have a site, a site manager. So that manager is every single day watching that construction. And construction management, I know Walter, Lucas, Mr. Lucas is outstanding, but he can't be on every project all the time. So we, we, yeah. It's in the best interest of the board to have a construction management firm represent.
I wasn't questioning that. I just thought.
Oh, the price. You probably think about the architect.
I thought it would take, it would cost more money, didn't it?
No, yeah.
Okay.
All right, this is an action item?
Chair, will we approve, sir?
Motion made by Dr. Campbell, second by Mr. Payne. Any discussion? Here and now, and please call the roll.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Silverman?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Avery?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. McBrady?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Next, we'll move to item 10.1, Board Requests for Information for Future Agenda Items.
Ms. Chair, Dr. Harrison, could we have at the next board meeting some information about our teach program?
Sure, certainly.
And how that's going? How many teachers?
Absolutely.
Any others? Any further business this evening? Meeting adjourned. Thank you. And we will have a work session following the regular session board meeting this evening. Thank you.